All right. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting of Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a jam-packed agenda. But before we get to that, Mrs. Rain, may I prevail upon you to read the public announcements in upcoming meetings?
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, MaKuan Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Recreation Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town's website at www.hanson-ma.gov or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, you had more?
Oh, I've got a whole bunch more.
Keep it going, Mrs. Rain.
Nomination papers for the May 18th, 2024, town elections are now available at the Town Clerk's office for the following offices: two Select Board for three-year terms, Board of Health for three-year terms, Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, two trustees of public library for three-year terms, assessor for a three-year term, Board of Health for a one-year term, Planning Board for a five-year term, two constables for three-year terms, two water commissioners for three-year terms. Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee, School District Committee pre-K through 12 for a three-year term. Each candidate prior to obtaining blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his or her name and address and the town office for which he/she intends to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 25th, 2024, and nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's office by Friday, 5:00 p.m., March 29th, 2024. Minimum of 50 certified signatures of registered voters is necessary in order for a candidate's name to be placed on the ballot. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, March 19th, 2024; Select Board, April 2nd, 2024.
Okay. Well, that was a mouthful. Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we have got Mr. John Madden here, and as you will recall, we have heard from Mr. Madden previously, a little bit of a preview, I guess I would say, and Mr. Madden is going to build upon what he's already spoken to us about and give us some recommendations. So, Mr. Madden, if you don't mind being in the...
Sure.
In the hot seat over there?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me back. What matters is true, some of this is review from the last time we were here. Some things have changed, some things have changed quite a bit, but some things haven't. So as we go through this, if some of it looks familiar, it's because we have been over. The process hasn't changed. We've spent a lot of time reviewing trends in previous years' activities, both revenue and expenses, and we went through that to develop trends to look forward for five years. We reviewed the town's revenue, and if you want me to slow down, and if you have any questions, please ask, but where we've been through this, I thought I moved along. The three ma... four major areas of revenues that we looked at were taxation, state aid, local receipts, and other financing sources, and their examples will be on there. Again, for those who like pictures, this is a breakdown of where your tax revenues come from by percentage for FY '24. You've been certified for FY '24, so these are hard numbers on your recap when the tax rate was set. And a little bit of a primer on real estate tax that we took a look at, how did it go to '24, what's all this business about Prop. 2.5, and the tax rate, and how it all comes together. Basically, if you look, you take the previous year's levy, the '23, you bump it up by 2.5 percent, you add new growth and debt exclusions, of which you have over half a million, and that is your levy limit. Some of the confusion is, well, the value of my property went up, or the tax rate is going up. It's true, but it's only a component of the total equation. If values are going up, if you're a citizen, then the tax rate is going to come down. It's not a one-off. Tax rates go up, so my tax bills are going up. Not exactly. There are other components involved in there that, when they might see, a single person might see their home value go up by 10 percent. How does that fit into 2.5? It doesn't. It doesn't. It's the value of your house. It's what is probably approachable to what you could get if you sold it. But on the other end, we're looking at tax rate, because we do, in fact, have that 2.5 And your local aid and some of the activity. '23 is the last full fiscal year for which you have information, so we work off of that, and we build our trends from that. Same thing with local receipts. A reminder, a lot of this is net of water special revenue. It's basically a self-sustaining operation, so what happens to the water budget and the offsetting revenue is it rises and falls from need. And one of the things is, there is debt associated with the water fund, and as that rolls off, it makes it look like your expenses are going down, but it really has no effect on the general fund, because all that does is relieve the liability for water revenue. It's purely water revenue, water expenses. So we back those out to get a better idea of what the effect is on the general government, the general operating budget. And those are just some examples of, you know, larger portions that you have, and you can see that they're basically, they're pretty consistent. Investment income, obviously, a huge increase. I mean, anybody who'd been following the Fed in the last year or two can see that that's going to be reflected across the board. But everything else, motor vehicle, it's 58 percent of your local receipts, and it went up, you know, it actually went down, I'm sorry, 1.79 percent this last year. And examples of your other financing sources. Your largest one is the ambulance receipts, and there's some information there regarding collections and the uses that you've used at the annual town meeting. Understood that at the special, at times, you use the ambulance receipts fund to provide for different purchases, and I believe at one point, you used it for the ambulance billing offset for the first year. Title V Septic Program, again, it's revenue that's used, and there's a direct correlation to the usage of this revenue to the debt that's being used to pay down the borrowing that was used to help fund the program. So as the debt goes down, so does the use of that fund, so it really becomes a wash. Free cash. We've talked about where it comes from. You set your budget, you expect to collect X amount of dollars, you expect to spend X amount of dollars. If you collect more, and this is very simplistic, but if you collect more than you planned on it, and you spend less than you budgeted, free cash. The, just to show you that it wasn't just my idea, Divisional Local Services recommends that free cash be used for one-time purchases or capital expenses. It's important, and it's important to keep in mind, because the town is in a position now where they're using it for, to pay ongoing expenses. That's not something that anybody would recommend. It's, to say that it's an act of desperation sounds dramatic, but it's where you are right now. You're using funds that should be used for one-time purchases to pay for ongoing utilities, salaries, and expenses of that nature. And again, for cult, here is how your '24 budget shakes out with regard to percentages. The largest, of course, nearly half being education, public safety has a substantial percentage, and the rest fall into, you know, anywhere from 7 percent in the general government to 1.3 for human services. Human services would be veterans, counseling agents, those sort of programs.
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Yes, sir.
When you're doing audits for other towns, you're looking at, do the colors typically come off the same way as we operate here? So this is pretty standard for...
It pretty much is. I mean, obviously, the elephant in the room is education, but for it to be half of the budget, that's not unusual.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, just in general. So you see that the dividing of these funds are pretty standard for what a town would...
Sure. Yeah. If you look, outside of education, if you look at those functions, if you look at public safety, public safety affects pretty much all of the town. In fact, it does. It affects the entire town. General government, while a lot of it is behind the scenes, you know, your finance, conservation, planning, those sort of things, townwide.
Yep.
Public Works, same thing. Townwide operation. When you get into Library and Recreation, and when you get into the Human Services, they're more specialized.
Yep.
The seniors, children, the library. Yes, the library is available to everybody, but generally, townwide, it doesn't receive the usage and such, and the notoriety that you would recognize from some of those other larger functions.
Okay. And do you see anything in these numbers that would suggest that we're underfunding in certain areas?
The determination if you're underfunding wouldn't necessarily come from this, it would come from the services that you provide.
Yep.
If, and as the Board of Select, you would hear that louder than anybody. If there are services that people feel are lacking, then you recognize those, and you determine where the shortfalls are, and you shore it up, obviously financially.
Yep.
But to say that public safety is underfunded at 10 percent, or general government at 7, or, you know, public works at 5.3, difficult to say unless there's some glaring omission that needs to be recognized.
And when you talk about public works, is that water and highway or just highway? Because water is...
No, there'll be highway, snow and ice. I'm trying to think of some of the other departments that are in there.
Well, because we don't have a DPW, so I...
Right.
But you didn't include water in that?
No.
Okay.
No, again, it goes back to the idea that water is a self-sustaining operation, and it kind of, pardon the pun, I suppose, muddies the waters when you include it in.
Yep.
Thank you. So that's a great point, because if 1.9 million, that would make a major change in those percentages.
The graph, I looked at it, I'm like, wow, public safety is this huge piece of pie. It's only 9.12 percent, so it seems like the pie is cut differently. The 14.42 is much smaller than the 9.2 physically on the graph, and it just threw me off, but do you know what I mean?
I do.
That's a good point, actually.
It's the first time I've ever did that.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
I can take a look at that, but sure.
I mean, it's no big deal, the numbers are the same, just think about...
No, but the visual is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right about that.
Good pitch.
Just funny. I'm not going to show anybody pictures. So, over the last four years, now that we have 20, we're working on 25 now, we're getting a look at where the budgets are. So these numbers have changed a little bit, not a lot, not a lot from the numbers that you looked at back in November. So the general government has gone up a little over 5 percent, public safety's gone a little over 7, education, public works, there are the numbers, obviously, almost everything goes up. Debt services down, because the debt issuances you have out there, you haven't brought on anything new, there is something we'll talk about later on that we haven't talked about before, but basically, debt service is rolling on. The thing about your debt services is mostly offset, and by that, I mean, you have two large debt issuances, the police station and also some debt related to the school, there was a debt exclusion, which means you have a dedicated revenue source to cover those, and as that debt gets paid down, that levy is not available for any other use. It goes away with the expense, so that becomes a wash. The other one, as I mentioned, is you have debts out there to assist in the Title V Septic Program that seems to be very, it's a big program, and as the loans are paid back, those funds are being used to pay off the debt that was needed to establish it. So that becomes a wash too. So, and that's the majority of your existing long-term debt. It's all basically covered by dedicated revenue. So the projected, the projected overall operating budget, based on trends, we're looking at 25 at one point going up, 7.78 over 24, and where 25 is still in flux, obviously, the budget process, as you know, is a very fluid process. These numbers are going to change, but not dramatically. Unlikely that they'll change dramatically. And we went over these, some of the items that, the highlights, is you still have the Regional Economy Call Center, and that will go up $100,000 approximately in '24, goes up, no, I'm sorry, I was saying, it went up $200,000 in '24, it's going to go up $100,000 in '25, and it's going to go up $100,000 in '26. And then it will be subject to any inflationary pressures that any other department would be under. I will correct that. And the Plymouth County retirement increase was 10 percent, unexpectedly high. I had assumed it would come in at 9 percent, and it came in higher. There were some salary adjustments that have been made that would be reflected in the assessment. There were payments, retroactive payments made to retirees.
Oh, right, right.
That, you know, the county has to look like the heroes, but then they turn around and pass the expense along to individual communities. Snow and ice under Chapter 4431. You can level fund it by law. At some point, the DOR is going to look at that budget, and they're going to see, well, your expenses are at X, and you have level funded for all these years, but your expenses are going up. You need to recognize that. But in the meantime, it's a tool that you can utilize. It's pretty flat. New growth, again, we talked about it, the Assessor Lee did a great job in working on developments that are coming to town and calculating what type of new growth will be involved in that. He was tremendously helpful in building that. Chapter 70 runs about 3 percent. Your undistributed general governmental aid, UGA, used to be lottery, BNO, charity games, changed the, I guess they didn't want associated with gambling, runs about 3 percent. Veterans benefits have trended downward. Motor vehicle excise, for all intents and purposes, flat. Your penalties and interest in taxes were up. Payments in lieu of taxes are up. But really, everything else going forward is pretty flat. Here we have what we're doing going forward for projected expenses. Again, it's really based on... So with all that, right now, and I know the '25 has come into, FY '25 has come into question, again, is the fluidity of the process itself, but the deficit at one time was 1.699 million, and it doesn't get any better, doesn't go away. So trending out based on what we've seen from the historical perspective, by 2030, it will be up to 5.3 million. And I believe that you live on an ass for a couple of years of history, so we've got '23 through '24 up there at your request.
Thank you.
And again, graph-wise, that's what it looks like, an indication that the gap doesn't get any smaller, it just continues to grow. So again, your operating budget, average annual increase, 6.23, not really sustainable under the current revenues that you're recovering. You've used $357,000 in free cash for '24. At this point, you're looking at a much higher use of free cash, which for all intents and purposes, nearly eliminates your capital plan, because free cash is the backbone of most communities' capital plans, and the more you use that free cash to supplement your budget, the less you can use that, obviously, as a funding source for your capital plan. Moving forward, again, disciplined and realistic budget requests and approvals, but ultimately, we're looking at an override. And the capital budget, as I said, it uses the free cash to balance the operating budget, reduces funding for one-time expenditures, and we had talked a little bit about the debt roll-off. When you do have levy to pay debt, and that is no longer needed, rather than let that amount of money bleed up into the operating budget, to reserve it, and it grows as the debt rolls off, and it becomes available for more debt or for one-time purchases prior to taking on more debt. But right now, you don't have a lot of debt that's carried by the levy. We talked about it earlier, that it's really offset, whether it's a debt exclusion or the sewer relief fund. We also had a conversation the last time about, well, what will it take to operate the budget based on revenues that we collect? Okay? In '25, okay, there's anticipated, if this is how you want to do it, in '25, your anticipated increase in taxation is $1,068,000. Your increase in state aid, $46,000. Your increase in local receipts, $107,000. But we're taking out free cash, so you have to reduce that from your revenues from the prior year, and your other financing sources are going down because of the debt, so it's not a terrible thing, but it's going down. So your net revenues to be raised, net new revenues to be raised in '25 is $808,000. Now, state and county assessments are going to go up, so from that $808,000, you have to take away $3,200 to cover your state and county assessments. Abatements and exemptions are going to go up, because your new growth is coming on, increase, so there's an offset of people that may want to file for abatements. So you need to prepare for that. So you've got to take $17,000 from there. Plymouth County retirement is going up $189,000. Understand, these are assessments, these are non-negotiable. You have to pay these, so they come off the top. Part of this recommendation is that you remove the unemployment compensation account line item from your budget and fund it with available, and I'll get into this later on in my recommendations portion, but for the purposes of this explanation, we're putting it back in, because you no longer have it as part of your general fund budget. Then you have your health insurance, group insurance, you have to pay that, and it's expected to go up $120,000. Your risk management, debt-to-liability insurances, property insurances, they're going up, $11,000, you have to cover that. Okay? Regional emergency call center is going up $100,000, so you have to cover that. So your total mandatory expenses, the increases, are $422,000. That leaves you with $386,000 in revenue to increase your 2025 budget. Anybody see a problem coming here?
Quick one.
And I would go through the same exercise for '26, '27, '28, '29, '30. So now, having said all that, and if you understand now where the $386 comes from, if we go to, if we take those percentages that we looked at, school at 49 percent, public safety at nine and change, other things at 7 percent, and you allocate those funds accordingly, in '25, you increase the general fund budget $32,000, public safety $88,000, education $226, public works $24, human resources $5,900, library and recreation $7,900. Member benefits and debt service are blank, because we already accounted for them when we were getting to the revenue that was discretionary and could be allocated, so they're not part of the formula. It's pretty meager. I think that you'd find, if you take a look at what have been requested and recommended thus far, they far outdistanced those available funds that you could use if that's what you wanted to do. In addition to that... There will be an addition to that. I thought I, I'm sorry, I thought I had put a graph in there for you, but what it would basically indicate is that because you're starting in a hole, okay, remember, you've been using the free cash. In '25, we're looking at an extraordinary amount of use of free cash. Even if you did convert, without cuts, even if you did convert to this methodology, where you're only using the revenues that you raised, you'd still be underwater for three years until it caught up, until debt rolled off, until certain expenses rolled off and were reduced, because you're in a hole. This is just going to keep you status quo. You still have that $1.4, $1.6 million hole to get out of. So as great an idea as it sounds, it's just not there to help you out. It really isn't. It's unrealistic. It would come with a lot of cuts. So I have some recommendations. The first one references Chapter 40, Section 5E. What that allows, that allows a town to have what's called an unemployment fund account. And the town, the law does not require the establishment, the town does not need to adopt the account, but it takes town many action to fund it. So that would be the town many action. So your warrant article would look something like this, to see if the town will raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, sub a money to the unemployment fund, or take any other action in relation thereto. So over the last, since 2021, the average appropriation's been $30,000. Your average expense, excuse me, has been $16,000. So you've been appropriating $30,000, that's July 1. Come June 30, you're spending half. There was an anomaly in there, Lisa explained it to me a few years back, but this is pretty consistent. In fact, in 2023, the total expenditure was just over $3,000 in unemployment, and through the last report that I got from the treasurer, no money is spent in unemployment. My recommendation is that you would remove $30,000 from your appropriation process, and instead, fund an account like this with available funds, free cash, overlay... And instead, fund an account like this with available funds, free cash, overlay, wherever you have it. We can throw around any amount that we wanted, but you could say $100,000. Okay? And at $16,000 a year, you wouldn't have to address that account again for another four years. Or you determine a line, you say, well, once the fund gets down to $50,000, we should replenish it. But you've just freed up $30,000 that is almost automatic, but doesn't necessarily reflect the activity, because you don't know what the activity is going to be. So by choosing this method of funding your unemployment requirements, you free up that levy, that $30,000 of levy, to provide elsewhere in your budget.
Can we just take a pause there? I just want to see if we've got any concerns from our town accountant, FinCom, we've got our town council, town administrator, everybody think this is prudent.
This is a quote?
Yep.
I mean, normally, I'm not a fan of excess amount of funds, that we always fill and replenish, but I mean, in the grand scheme of things, $30,000 isn't going to fix what we have right now.
No, yeah.
I think it's always been one of the sneaky methods by which we build free cash every year, is we have some of these accounts that always go over, that we never use, and it's just rolled back in. We've also been very judicious with how we spend the reserve fund. The reserve fund is another method that, you know, if something like that existed, if there was an expense needed, we have the reserve fund. So, I don't know.
Okay.
So it's fine. I'm just putting up there as a recommendation. I understand that if you appropriate $30,000, you only use three. Sure, as we were talking, there's $27,000 of free cash. But you're not meeting your operation requirements. Free cash, free cash at this point is a luxury. It's good that you were able to create free cash, because it's going to help you fund your budget.
Mr. Kentscher, any thoughts on that?
No, the concept, I do use the concept, because I'm applying this on like a regular operating cost. Usually, you haven't a fund if you have layoffs or something, you need like a bill of, so, yeah, I mean, it's not a bad idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, so long as there's sufficient funds when you need them from a legal perspective, the problem's remaining.
All right. So can we plan on putting this on one of our next agendas to, you know, talk about whether we want to adopt this, and what the mechanics would be?
We'll be around for the 19th.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mann.
We still have time for town meeting. The one we've pulled down.
This is something we talked about earlier. Again, it's not big money at this point, but it does accumulate. We talked, I believe we talked the last time I was here about the process for debt, is that it's called level principal payments. It's not like your mortgage, where principal and interest shift over time, over the course of, so you have level payments. You pay level principal payments, and that reduces your outstanding balance, so your interest rates over time reduce. So ultimately, the amount of your loan goes down, instead of what you would be used to in a mortgage, straight line for the life, for the loan. And my recommendation was to look at this more closely, and determine whether or not you feel that it's worth, as those debt payments become smaller, taking that delta and not using it, reserving it for future purchases or more long-term debt. It'll take a while to accumulate, but it would be there at some point. And I think it would be helpful at some point for your capital plan.
Okay. So is that something, yes, Mr. Kentscher?
Yeah, so basically, we are doing that now. Last year, there was a library on anticipation note that we paid $100,000 down in FY '24 budget. So this year, we have a $586,000 debt issue for the McQuon School, which we have to pay off. So in this year's budget, when we took that $100,000, we'll use it to pay off $100,000 on the McQuon School. And then just every year budget, $100,000, and eventually, that McQuon School we paid off. So it's a great concept, and actually, the former treasurer and I, like we discussed it, she was, all right, keep it in there, because we have McQuon, because the alternative is, you just keep rolling over, that someday, you just say, I have to say, you have to pay off this $586,000, so there's a plan to pay that off.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan, thoughts on that?
No.
Good, okay, all right. Great.
Good segue. Next recommendation. According to your financial advisors, you have three outstanding bands, temporary borrowings, on anticipation notes. And until now, certainly with the school items, that only the interest is being paid. When you receive your assessment from the schools, they only, in their budget, they only include the required payments. And the only required payment in a band is the interest. And this is exactly to Eric's point, what he's doing, is saying, let's pay down, in your case, the McQuon Elementary School, HVC, I believe, was what the financial advisor said, make the payments on principal and interest, stop kicking the can down the street, which I did steal from you, Eric. No. Make these payments, either determine that you're going to make principal payments until it's paid off, or you're actually going to turn it into permanent long-term debt. The advantage to doing a band and paying down a band is, traditionally, the interest rates have been lower. They're lower than a bond interest rate. But as we've seen recently, interest rates have fluctuated, and it makes it more difficult. If you converted these to long-term debt, at least you know for the life of the debt, whether it's five years or seven years, because they're small issuances, that you would know what the interest rates are, you'd know what your bond schedule is, and it's easier to budget.
Mr. Kentscher?
Yeah, so I just want to, you know, kind of like a behind-the-scenes thing, and sadly, with the previous town accountant, which I thought was a good idea, we're kind of talking with John Stambro, and basically, I'm making principal payments on the bands, both of those bands like that, each back to middle school. Because when they assess us, they assess us interest only, but we have them assess us a little bit more, so we can pay down the principal. So we're on a plan to pay down the principal each year. So like our assessment for capital might have been like $282,000, and then we said, no, we want more anyways, because we want to make, we have a way to pay off these principles. So that's kind of what we're doing currently.
Okay.
And this model, the model that I'm basing on, the override includes principal payments made to these temporary loans, because you just got to get them off the books.
Yeah.
They're not going to go away. And so, in the school budget, where they only have the one particular excluded debt, we've added the $200,000, and after a few years, we've built in going down to $100,000, because one is just longer than the other. And also, on the town side, Eric and the treasurer have already worked that in. And I've just extrapolated out a few more years, until we decide that the loan will be paid off. So it is in this model. Operational override, it's inevitable. At this point, at the time that I was working on this, I foresaw the override going into effect for the '26 budget, not the '25 budget. Obviously, things have changed. People are looking at the deficit as it stands down, trying to figure out, this can be modified, it can be moved. But for now, just to explain what you're looking at tonight, it was anticipated that this would be implemented for the FY '26 cycle. So $5 million, okay, if you go back, you notice that after five years, the deficit was $5.3 million. Well, this is an operational override, and that's important for two reasons. As an operational override, it is subject to the compliance with Prop 2.5. You get 2.5 increase on that $5 million. Okay? Because it becomes part of your levy, and it becomes part of Prop 2.5. So while you look, and you say, geez, John, I can do the math here, you're recommending $5 million, yet in year five, it's $5.3 million. Well, that's because over the four preceding years, 2.5% has been added on to that five as part of your levy. The operational override, unlike a debt exclusion or a capital exclusion, become part of your operating levy, and therefore, subject to the rules of Prop 2.5. Another thing this does is it frees up. We were talking about, at one point after the special, having somewhere in the vicinity of $1.4 million perhaps of free cash, it may have changed. But right now, you're looking at using it for balancing the budget. Okay? That free cash, $1.4 million will go a long way to a pretty robust capital plan. So by going to this operating override, you're now freeing up those funds. So based on the '24 data, okay, remember, the last time you've had your tax rate set was FY '24, the current year of the war in. So the $5 million override, the first year, remember, this is growth, okay? So the first year was approximately $2.7 million. Look at that. Let's say it, because it's true. So the first year that this override is implemented, the resident isn't hit with a $5 million tax increase. Okay? The purpose of this override is to last five years, using it incrementally over the course of the five years. The first year, the $2.7 million, it would increase your tax rate by a dollar eight. Okay? It would increase the tax bill by $540.53. It would increase the FY '24 average tax bill to $7,299. Now, this is year one. Ultimately, it's going to max out in five years, and a lot of things change. Valuations change, rates change, a lot of things are going to change. But for year one of this model, that would be the effective way.
Mr. Sullivan.
I'm sorry, sir, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Just what assessed value of all these?
Yeah, what was the average?
That for that rate.
Somewhere, I thought I saw $490,000, I don't know.
I haven't.
I have it in the model, but I have to go to Excel spreadsheet. I don't know what would happen if I did that.
Okay, thank you.
But I can verify that with you.
So, just so maybe someone else might have this impression, and I'm not the financial person, right? So is the delta 540, so then the total tax bill from years prior, plus the delta increase, that total is 7,200? So prior to it, it was 6,800?
Yeah, if your home is valued at $499,000, whatever it was, your bill was at approximately Based on the criteria from '24, because that's the only certified information that we have, that bill would have been $7,229. So to anybody at home, they got your tax bill, it had $540. And divided by four.
In aggregate, how much do we get, if we do this 1.8%, 1.08 per thousand, or whatever, how much does that generate in '24? Like, what's the, not, five million?
Well, it covers the $2,000, $2,700,000 deficit that was calculated for FY '26. It's not going to be exact, because the only numbers, rather than make stuff up, the only numbers that we have are the real numbers of FY '24. So those calculations are based on, you know, the levy as certified by the DOR. And the deficit was $2,511, I'm sorry, $2,511,000.
So this will generate $2,511,000 and have us break even in 2024. How do we figure out if each year, how much we're going to increase the tax bill?
I think you...
This, $5 million is always available. From day one, $5 million is available. Based on the assumptions that we used projecting expenses and revenues going forward, the deficits, if you take a look on that particular sheet, the deficits are predicted based on projected expenses versus projected revenues. The deficit becomes, how much more levy do we need? Okay? The $5 million is not used on day one, it's available. So we would determine that in year one, you would need $2,511,000. In year two, you would need not an additional 2.7, but your deficit would be 2.7. So you would use 2.7 of that available.
So this is going to, if we do the this, 2024, it's going to go up a dollar, or $540 per $500,000 house? But it's going to go up about the same for the next five years?
Approximately. I mean, there are going to be variations. Remember, we talked about some expenses going away. You're seeing a big jump, you got, one example that we looked at, you're going to see a big jumbo the next couple of years because of the regional call center. That's jumping up $100,000 a year for the next two years. After that, it's going to be subject to the same inflationary pressures as any other department. So you may only see it go up 3% or 4% going out. So you'll see this big liftoff in that particular example. And you have other items that the town administrator has worked to shore up weaknesses in the budget over the last few years. And hopefully, at some point, you'll be at a good place, where some of the major issues are resolved. And then now, you're moving forward, and you've done a great job with IT, you've done a great job with retention of good employees. I know you're looking at the animal control operation now, just things that need help.
Did we factor in the South Shore of OpTec?
Yes, I saw it in here somewhere.
No, I saw something, but did we factor in the fact that they're going, they're proposing to build? And we're going to be part of it? This is not in here?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. All right. In all honesty, it's sort of, yeah, it's sort of recently started really getting traction, and we started getting more facts about it, so.
One of the things, as you go forward, we're making ends meet here. Okay? This $5 million is to, again, it goes back to operating, electricity, salaries, those things it takes to run the operation of the town on a day-to-day basis. What I mentioned is, the $5 million is available, let's just call it on day one, but you're not going to use it. It's not the intention of these recommendations to use $5 million on day one. The fact is, the number is out there. Okay? And if someone comes along and says, hey, I want to build a garage, I don't know, pick a capital project that would involve borrowing, can you do it without a debt exclusion? Well, yeah, you kind of can.
But that scares me a little bit, because this kind of says, okay, now you've got $5 million, we could build a garage, we could do this whole thing without a debt exclusion, without going, you know, without asking for more money, and...
That's where your board comes in, though.
Yeah.
I mean, you determined that an exclusion goes on the ballot. And that's important, the numbers that...
Well, it's where town meeting comes in, too. We're not just, you know, running roughshod, doing whatever the heck we want.
No, you can, but you do have special interest groups, every community has them. But that's why I, it's so important to impress that this is an operational override, it's not meant to directly resolve any capital issues that might be out there. You're making ends meet.
But I see where it's coming from. We really are going to have to keep everybody in check, and not be spending like drunken sailors, because all of a sudden, we've got $5 million, you know, I mean, it's, you know...
I said in the earlier slide, it's all about discipline.
No offense, Kevin, I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Kevin.
It's about discipline. It absolutely is. It's about discipline. It absolutely is. I said in an earlier slide, it's about discipline and having a plan. It's my understanding that the school budget request kind of caught you off guard. Do they have, do the schools have a five-year plan? I had seen one earlier. I didn't agree with me. I had seen one. I don't think 10% is part of it. But that's what you need. That's what you need. So what happens when somebody wants to build a building? Most likely, it's a debt exclusion.
Yeah.
Because this levy is to make sure that you don't have to come back to the residents again for at least another five years. And it comes back to discipline and understanding that this is an operational override. It's not a cure-all.
I mean, I think, you know, we're still going to push back on budgets. We're still going to do all of the things that we've been doing that, you know, have allowed us to cobble this little budget together and keep things chugging along despite, you know, the fact that we don't have a huge amount of new growth, you know? And I think one of the things in terms of your question about the schools, they, I know they did have a five-year plan. I'm not sure it's necessarily been updated for some of the changes that they've made to staffing and various other things. But they did have one, and we can certainly circle back and talk to them about that. But I mean, what we want to do is be able to, a lot of this stuff, there are always going to be surprises, but a lot of this stuff doesn't have to be a surprise every year. It just doesn't have to be a surprise. There are things we can't control, you know, certain costs that we can't necessarily control. We can come up with some predictions, but we can't control. And other than that, a lot of our costs, we can anticipate. And, but we've been a bit reactive, I think, and necessarily so, you know, because that's the position that we've been in. I, you know, it is, it is, it is a tough pill to swallow to say, you know, a $5 million override. It just sounds so enormous, just like, just kind of mind-bogglingly enormous. But when you talk about why, how we've gotten here and why it's needed, you make a very compelling argument. It's hard to argue if what we want to do is be managing and have a budget that we can manage to, I don't see any other way for us to do it other than to have an override.
It seems to me that in Town of Hanson, whether it's the implementation or the expectation on the part of the residents, but the bar has been set very high to provide services to the residents, to provide high-end services. And I would think that that's reflected throughout the town. I would think that there's a satisfaction. You're always going to, you know, haters going to hate. But I think that, you know, you're providing a level of service, and as you desire to provide a high level of service to the residents, it comes at a price. And this is, this is where we're at. I mean, if you don't want a $5 million override, then, I'm sorry, it's not a scare tactic, but you pull in every department and say, this year, we've got a $1.6 million deficit. Next year, we have a $2 million deficit if we don't do something about this. That's not going along to get along. Those are cuts. Those are cuts. And that level of service that the board and management has worked so hard to try and attain now gets eaten away. And again, it's a fact. It's not a threat. It's a fact that if you want to sustain these levels of services, there's a price that goes along with it. And that's what the town, by placing a ballot question to the voters has to decide and whether the town goes along with, yeah, with this little one.
Let's see.
I'm just thinking, Madam Chair, I just wondered how we compare, I think Joe asks a lot of times, how we compare to other towns? Are other towns seeing percentage-wise numbers? I know the exact numbers aren't going to be the same, but how, you know, Whitman or Halifax or something, are they facing the same issues that we are? Are we somehow different than other towns?
I, to that end, all I can tell you is over the last five years, I can't name them all. There's been an outbreak, if you will, of override ballot questions. Did I understand, I don't know if it's the, some of the effects of post-COVID. I know COVID gets blamed for everything. But a lot of the expectation of revenues to go down and then one-time funding, this could be one of the issues, because I've seen this in a couple of other school departments, their ESRS grants, the equivalent of your CARES grants, and the use of E&amp;D, their equivalent of your free cash, being used to fund ongoing expenses.
That's exactly what happened, yeah.
The biggest thing you have to remember about free cash is once you use it for an ongoing expense, you don't get it back. So if you're going to use free cash for ongoing expenses, you're never going to see that money again, because now you've begun to squeeze your revenues to accomplish what you need to in your budget, and you don't generate that free cash anymore.
We know that, and Mr. Sullivan reminds us every town meeting of that. He really does. He, you know, he plays the role that he is supposed to be playing, and he reminds us about the use of free cash, but when we're up against it, and it's a, you know?
I understood. I understood. And what, the other thing that can happen as byproducts of this is that you squeeze the budgets, and you tighten them and tighten them and tighten them. Remember the accident of budgeting? You get budget turnbacks. You spend less than you expect, okay? And if you're rationing down the budgets beyond bare bone, one of your major components of free cash generation has disappeared.
That's a good point.
And to the extent that some towns look at bumping up their reserve fund because there's less room for the unexpected, you know, there's some budgets, they're not fat. Every department goes in and looks at it and says, this is what it's going to cost me to do something. But the cost of electricity comes down, or the cost of fuel comes down, and all of a sudden, they have something there. But the DBW needs a transmission. Well, thank God, I budgeted more electricity than it turns out I need, and now I can afford to fix that transmission. As the budgets get tighter and tighter, it's not there. So suddenly, the Finance Committee is getting a reserve fund transfer request for a transmission. They never saw that before. It's well because of transmission, we used to be able to eat in the fluctuations in the day-to-day life of operations. That goes away.
Mr. Weeks, any questions?
No, this is really a good presentation, per usual. I think we're finding ourselves in a tight spot because at the end of the day, it really just comes down to money in, money out, and that graph is, it's pretty telling of where we're at in the next few years. So we have, we have some soul searching to do to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to manage this. We have lots of people that can't absorb it, but we have lots of departments that are depending upon us to keep them up and going. So we're going to have to figure out how to do what's best for the community, per usual.
And things, things have changed even since I created this report. I mean, I know there's talk about an immediate override, which at one point, we anticipated '26, where the budget process was running along. Well, now it's been sped up to another year.
We were talking about this last year. I mean, it's putting us in a position where we have, we have departments making sacrifices for other departments, and then we're constantly going back and having people making sacrifices and trying to figure out how to, how to make this work, and it's just not a sustainable model.
It isn't, and we've made so much progress in professionalizing and standardizing things in Town Hall and in town in general. Lots of, lots of improvements. I mean, a lot of it with grant money, frankly, because we've got these, you know, this deficit all the time. And, and this is very sobering. You know, we're definitely going to have to, you're right, Mr. Weeks, do some soul searching because we know that, we don't take this lightly. You know, I don't wake up wanting to pay more taxes. I don't want other people to have to pay more taxes. You know, that's not, you know, that's, that's not our daily mantra. So I don't know. It's, but it's, at the end of the day, it is a math problem. We don't have enough money to, you know, continue the way we're going. We've got to do something different.
And as I said, this report was based on certain assumptions. Some of them changed, '25 versus '26. If you want to filter questions through Lisa, and I can update this and get it to you, I'd be glad to.
Okay.
Now, this is constantly being tweaked, and should go along. So if there's anything here that, would you want me to go through Eric or anybody?
I definitely would want some discussion about the South Shore voc tech because I think that's going to be an important and revolve large number. And I'm not sure how we'd handle that and if that would be a separate over. I'm not sure, you know?
My, I think it would be just separate.
Okay.
It's called a debt exclusion, separate vote, separate cost.
That's where you are. This is not, if you look at this again, I'll beat this dead horse, this is an operational override. It's not to provide a solution for anything else except for capital to free up free cash, to allow for a more robust capital plan. But it's not to build buildings, per se. It's to pay salaries, electric, benefits. And the reason I say that is because it goes back to the fact that that is, your levy limit is your expenditure limit.
Yeah.
Even with the override, you just have to treat it carefully. So outside of that, anything as large as a building construction or anything like that, I would agree with Eric, would most likely be a debt exclusion. It would be another ballot question.
And that's the way it should be, and then we'll see what support, you know, I think generally, most people agree the South Shore vocational, you know, school is great. They do a great job. It's a very needed, you know, service. So we'll let the voters decide. I'm not sure where I saw this, but did you have some recommendations around water or the way that some of their?
I'm not sure who you saw it either.
Yeah, but I vaguely recall seeing that some of the ways we were dealing with things were not appropriate. Okay, yes, there we go. So can you delve into that a little bit?
There's a couple of things. They're not deal breakers. When I was, when I was working with Eric, we were looking at, trying to get a handle on the water fund part of it and how, how it affects the general fund operation. And there, some of the things, if you take a look, there's an example, it's health insurance, okay? So in, in the water fund, there's this anonymous account. It's called inter-fund transfers. And it's approximately $331,000. And it is transferred into the general fund to cover services that are provided for in the general fund, okay, on behalf of the water fund, health insurance being one of them. But to further convolute things, the health insurance fund is being appropriated to cover all the expenses of those employees that fall within the general fund, not the water fund. But all the bills are being paid from the general fund and being reimbursed into that account from the water fund, which effectively makes the health insurance account a revolving fund. Then you're right. That's something that, some of the things that you can, and other employee benefits, same thing, whether it's health insurance, life insurance, town share of Medicare. Remember, for every 1.45% that's withheld from an employee, the employer has to match that. So that's a town cost. Services performed by other departments in the general fund are just, they're not as clean as they could be. I guess that's what I'm saying. Nobody's, nobody's going to jail. It's just, could be cleaned up.
All right, but you're also not saying we're somehow subsidizing the water department? Because that was my initial, I was like, wait a minute, are we?
I don't believe you are, but it would be hard, but it would be hard to prove that some of these processes are cleared up.
Mr., Mr., our Town of Compton has a perspective on this.
You're new to Town of Compton. So basically, what happens is when the bills first come into the Treasury's office, they pay the bill out of the general fund, then the Treasury's office bills the water department. The water department takes it out of their budget and replaces it into the general fund budget to reimburse, reimburse it. That's it in a nutshell. It could be like a little cleaner, but there's no, they give those for exactly.
So is it possible for us just to prorate the portions and take general fund for everybody but water?
That's what I'm just doing. I like, one big thing I tell them is to say, you know, transfer to, from the water fund to the general fund to cover the indirect costs. Yeah, just the way we were to the vote.
Yeah, there are a couple of things you can do. You can direct expense. Rather than pay the whole bill out of the general fund and then reimburse, well, pay the water share out of the water fund, pay the general fund share out of the general fund. There are costs, like the services performed in the Treasury Collector's Office. You can have an article that reads for the water fund to say, to raise the water revenue, revenues to appropriate X amount of dollars for the operation of the town and further transfer X amount of dollars to the general fund for its share of costs associated with the Treasury Collector's Office.
Okay.
So you can take care of some of it at town meeting. You can take care of some of it in the budget. It will probably all come back to that $331,000, but you've articulated it more clearly. And it's just more, it's easier to explain. It's easy to explain that every resident doesn't have to come to Eric. They can kind of look at it and go, oh, that's where some money goes, and that's where some money goes, and this is how we handle the rest of it. And now it's basically just a housekeeping recommendation. It had nothing necessarily to do with the override, but it was just observations that we came across when we were reviewing the budget.
So Ms. Green, can I, could we prevail upon you to work with the Treasury Collector's Office, with the Town Accountant, and loop in FinCom wherever necessary to take a look at these recommendations and tell us what we're able to do and when we might be able to do something about them, and then bring them back for us to discuss? Okay, did anybody have anything else for Mr. Mann? Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Oh.
Sorry to interrupt.
Well, just one second, Mr. Malisi. Do you need to leave for seven o'clock?
Yes, I can come at seven.
Okay, Mr. Malisi, I'm sorry, but we, okay, we need to talk about the elephant in the room, which is the school override, a potential school override, and I need these gentlemen here to talk about it. So, okay. But if you want to, Mr. Mann, do you, could you possibly answer Mr. Malisi's, you know, sort of one-off?
I can, I'll send him an email.
Okay, all right, all right, great. I'm sorry, Frank.
No, that's okay.
All right. Okay, so regarding potential school override, so Ms. Green, did you provide this to Mr. Sullivan and to Mr. Kinsherf?
I had Eric work.
Yes, they do have copies of this. All right, okay, great. So did you want to, did you want to talk to us about this?
Sure. So you all have the five scenarios that are laid out in front of you. I included Mr. Madden's scenario as scenario number five. So it's pretty straightforward to look at it. If the schools come down to 5% of the first two scenarios, no free cash use, we'd need an override of just under $1 million. Then an estimated average tax bill impact of $239. The schools reduced to 5% and we use half our free cash, it would leave an override amount of about $218,000, which at that point, almost isn't even worth it for the time and effort. So again, this is more of a math exercise for now. If the schools remain at the 10.2 increase and we use no free cash, we'd need the full $1.68 million override, which would equate to a $419 increase in the average tax bill. Again, that's based on a house of valuation of $499,000. Scenario number four is if the schools hold their 10.2 operating assessment and we use half free cash, use $744,000 of free cash. It's $940,000, so just south of a million, an increase to the average tax bill of $235. And finally, Mr. Madden's scenario, which would be the full $5 million override, which would carry us out for the next five years, or his recommendation. That one is if you were to spend, that number at the bottom where it says $1,244 increase to the tax bill, that's if you were to spend the $5 million right away. Which is not what he's recommending. So it would actually leave us the ability to, but we would not.
This is an important distinction. Can you, like, build on this?
Yeah, so the number that he presented, which was, I think it was a 400, this would be the year one.
I think he said $540.
Yeah, $540. So that would be based on his, that's also for, I think he said '26. So it would probably be less for next year. So you're probably looking at about $500 increase to the average taxpayer if you were to carry, if you do the $5 million operational override to cover the total operating deficit with the schools remaining at 10.2%.
So you, yeah, the school's built into this?
Yes, man.
The school at the 10.2. I mean, I, I.
If you leave the school where it is and take free cash out of the equation.
There's no, I can't wrap my mind around the school staying at 10.2. I know we have to build it into these scenarios because it's.
I'm hoping we get further down the road, which is why I provided the other scenarios. He makes an excellent point, one that we've said for too many years. We spent too little and then all of a sudden we all saw when it went up so significantly that we couldn't overcome it. We're going to be at an every other year override. I'm doing this every year unless we take one giant step. And again, you know, people hear $5 million, but it's not spending $5 million. It's just raising enough, it's a number, right? So we still don't even have to spend, we can still decide the next year, hey, you know what, we still got a million, a million and a half of free cash. We're still going to ease it, we'll use 500,000 of free cash. That, that number is just a number. It raises us above the number, so we could use it if we had to. And it sets us on a positive trajectory going forward, where, you know, between everyone in this room, we've been a good steward of the town's money and tried to get by with very little. But he makes a good point. We have a fully staffed fire department now. We didn't have that a few years ago. We have a fully staffed police department. You know, we were one of the first towns to have that, where some of these other towns were going dark in them. So we have citizens who expect a high level of services and you just can't get there without a massive step forward because when the rules changed and all the math changed on us, we should have done it then, but we cobbled everything together to keep the ship afloat. But now, you know, if we don't do this, we're going to look, we're going to be in this position every other year, every year.
Does the $540 only cover the 10.2 for the school or does that give you some access for the town?
I thought he said $2,700,000.
Yeah, it gives you, it gives you more. Well, again, that was based on FY '23.
Yeah, that's right.
His protection was a year ahead.
Yeah.
So you have to back it down until, if you did it now for the following year, it would be less. In my, my protection, I don't know the exact math. But it allows us to use what free cash is intended for, which is capital projects. We haven't done, we don't do a lot of, we don't do any capital.
And that's, that's, in our buildings, show it, you know? I mean, we're in a rapid state of deterioration on every building we have because we never have money to do anything.
And again, I don't really know if you remember the last override when I went through all of this. Hanson has one of the lowest tax rates of any of the towns around us. It's just by and large, it's not because all the other towns have, you know, a lot of industry. They just have raised their taxes year after year. For many years, we had a flat tax rate. We had years where we lowered taxes.
Yes.
Now, looking back, maybe it wasn't such a great idea. No one likes higher taxes, but we've sort of set up this perfect storm where you can look around at any, talk to any of your neighbors, any of your friends who live in another town, they pay way more taxes and don't really have a lot of.
Now, people will say, my tax has gone up. Yes, because your assessed value has gone up. Take a look at the real estate market.
Absolutely.
But your rate that we are, we have got is very low.
That's absolutely.
Can I say?
Yes.
The number's large. It's, and I, I want to look at this number. How do I say this? I want to look at this number with school override included, but I want the school, I want, I have to say this. I want that school department to cut their budget to the bones the way they should, because I don't think they have. I don't believe that. I think that the kids are our primary concern and there's an awful lot of administrative costs over there that are not going to be kids. And that bothers me. If we're going to start talking about having to cut police and having to cut fire, I don't even want to say that. I want that budget dissected also. That's, I have to say that.
And I think that is something that your board needs to work with Whitman and say, you know, where are the actual numbers? What are we talking about? You know, the school committee is tasked with providing the best, you know, we've heard it a million times. We have to be the advocates. That's sort of a cop out, in my opinion. You have to be advocates and good partners. Like, we're all partners.
We're all in the same boat.
We're all in the same boat, we're all partners, but you can't, it would be like the town taking the complete opposite and saying, oh, we're only funding the town. You guys are on your own.
Yeah.
We're all in this together. And I think that you, your board has every right to go to the school and say, you know, we want to see what, where is all this money actually going?
I have a quick question. I don't sure that this, if you can answer. There's a 5% increase in the school and a 10.2 increase. And I know everybody's talking about that. Is that increase above and beyond COVID fund? You know what I mean? There was additional money put in for COVID. Is the 10% above and beyond that? Or is it above and beyond?
That 10% is the operating assessment that they're giving us right now.
They've built in. Are you saying the ESR, the ESR money, it's built in? And on, and this is on top of the ESR?
So this is on top of money that we didn't pay them? You know what I mean? We, Town of Hanson didn't pay this money back in 2020 or 2021? And now they're expecting us to pay this money that we didn't pay?
Correct.
Plus 10%.
Correct.
So that's, that's.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
In short, I would say if we don't, if we need the $5 million override has to either come this year or next year.
Right.
We can keep the ship afloat, again, for one more year, but we're not going to do anything. And then we're really up against it next year when we spend all our free cash. And then an override is, you're forcing your hand to have to override your massive debt, so.
I want to be clear. If, even if we do decide to do the $5 million override this year, this is not a go-forth schools with the 10.2% increase. Like, absolutely not. Absolutely not. Because we're not going to spend it out of the gate and we're going to be frugal, so we don't have to do another override. So I just don't want to be giving a mixed message here that like, we've suddenly got money and it's all going to go to the school. That's not, you know.
You know, we all know that this is going to be a hard fought battle. I mean, we have, it was a hard fought battle, yet the last override, that was what? One?
1.85.
Yeah, it was like 1.1.
1.85.
1.85?
Just 5 million.
We watched, we were able to get that. People were outraged. This one is three times that.
Yep, they're going to have a stroke.
Yes, Ms. Green. Yes, I just want to throw some information out there. So in 2019, the town of Norwood, they passed a $5.95 million override. In 2023, the town of Hingham passed an $8 million override. So towns are beginning to look at these high overrides.
Hingham might not be the best comparison.
But still, I mean, they passed an $8 million override with the amount of money that Hingham has coming in, in their revenues.
I know, but I think we'd want to look at similar demographics.
So, my capacity on the board of the Association of Town Finance Committees, more and more towns are having to settle for this because of this exact scenario where the state government and the federal government built these one-time funds in and then wouldn't base their budget on it. And now everyone is behind a wall in the small town, all the small towns. That's all we hear, we're behind, we're behind.
And not only that, the state's not stepping up on half of the stuff that they've said that they're going to pay.
Right.
So, you know, so then that leaves, you know, so we've got these sort of unfunded mandates. You know?
We're used to getting money from people and we built into the budget. And I think you hit the nail on the head. The idea is we, we built a budget on the house of cards, given a whole bunch of injected, so, you know, free money.
It's a bleak picture.
And two things, I just want to say. Remember that if you and Whitman get together, the way the assessment works is if you're, if you're assessed whatever, but each town equally appropriates their proportion, whatever that is.
Yes, yep.
You know, that's what gets appropriated, right? And then they can go through the process of a super town meeting and all that stuff, right? And the schools can force it. But if Whitman and Hanson are aligned in their position, they can force a lesser proportion.
Well, I will say that Mary Beth, their town administrator, and Lisa have been coordinating. I have called Beth Stafford and Carl there because the board had asked whether we could have a three-party agreement, you know, kind of a meeting, summit. Thanks, Kevin.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry to keep you. And they were both very willing, but Beth felt that it was a little bit premature for us to meet right now because she thought they still had some work to do on the budget, which was somewhat encouraging to me.
Yeah.
So, so I feel, you know, and I can't be Pollyannaish. I'll put that right out there, but, but I feel a little bit optimistic that that number is going to come down. And it's a bit like Groundhog Day every year. It's the gnashing of teeth and the.
Yeah, the more you know, the more meetings, the new press, right? But the other thing that I've been hearing, and this is just rumor, again, I'm not the finance person, but I hear these things is, and I don't know if this is what you were referring to, Ed, is that chapter 70 funding is less. So it was coming in at 18% year-over-year and then suddenly they're down to 3%.
Yep.
So the schools were struggling with trying to react to having lesser funds from the state and then they're pushing it on.
That is one of the contributing factors, but a very large contributing factor is that they used about $800,000 of one-time money, which we just heard from Mr. Madden. Thou shalt not use one-time money to balance your budget. That's what the schools did. And they've got their reasons and, and we're not the school committee. We're not trying to step in their shoes. We're not trying, but if we're really, truly being transparent, then it's not just 10% that we're being asked to increase. It's that one-time money that they used plus the 10%, which is enormous. It's enormous, yes.
And we should, that should be off the board. We should not include one-time money. I mean, that's, that's.
And I have to say, sure, we're not the school department, the school committee, and we shouldn't, but at the same time, any common sense would tell you, hiring 31 people with one-time money and then expecting it to be just eaten into a budget is ridiculous.
Well, I will say, Mr. Lematina said a year or so ago that he thought that it was reckless.
It's very reckless.
And at the time, I think people thought he was being dramatic.
No, he wasn't being.
And here we are, and I think, you know, that probably holds true, so.
And the other, I did read in that article, that maddening article in our little local paper, that this was going to be, it's going to be reflected on what happens with the children. It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. I mean, that these veiled threats are maddening to me.
I honestly think they need to do the best they can with the money that they're given, just like we are going to do the best we can with the budget we have. That's what we've all been elected to do. And I'm really, and you guys are going to have to hold me a check here. I'm really committed to not, you know, throwing grenades. I'm really committed to trying through this budget process to not throw grenades and be a good partner, but that does not mean that I'm going to concede to anything that's requested. I'm going to trust but verify and we're going to get the numbers. So I think it's early on for us to really, but I just wanted, I wanted us to discuss where we're at with Madden's analysis and that was a good setup for where we're at now. And in my mind, there's two, we either do, as Kevin said, Mr. Sullivan said, you know, we either do a one-time school override now and then a large override next year. That doesn't, you know, I mean, as big as that $5 million number is, I, I think it's important for us to have a better understanding of how that works in terms of, you know, like, if we're doing the five, let's say, we say the school increases at five and the estimated tax bill is going to, you know, the estimated increase would be $239. Well, what would it be if we really just hold at that? Even though we pass a $5 million override, if we really just try to hold the line and only address that deficit that is the school, what does that impact people? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I think there's a way to blend these two things so that we're getting where we need to go, but not dumping a huge increase on people right out of the gate. So we need, I think, some more information and we need our brethren at the, with the school committee to come down to a more reasonable number. And we need to work with our brethren in Whitman and we will get this done. Because one thing is for sure, schools will open, town hall will be open, services will continue to be provided. The level may vary, but we'll see. And I think we should just try to be as optimistic as possible. So Ms. Green, I am assuming that you will be talking to Mary Beth and Whitman? And?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I really, I think the key is, as Ms. Federoff indicated, we need to be as united and in lockstep as we possibly can because I think any chink in that armor is going to not bode well for either one of us. So, did anybody have any parting thoughts? You look pale over there.
I know, I am.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking about this whole Madden report that we just saw and where does the school budget fit into that? Was that figuring a 5% yearly increase? Or is it a 10-point something?
No, no, he definitely did not put in the 10, no.
Was it?
I think it was more in the 5%. Yeah, yeah. He definitely did not put in the 10. Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, I think we all need therapy. All right, speaking for myself, all right. Okay, that brings us to discuss contract renewals. So we had an executive session meeting two weeks ago?
Yes.
And we discussed the renewal of the deputy police chief, town administrator and highway director. And we took votes, which I would like to take an open session this evening. So I will entertain a motion on the deputy police chief contract. And again, this is all subject to negotiation. What we're saying is we want to enter into negotiations on that contract. Of course, if somebody comes up with something crazy that we can't agree with, we may not end up renewing the contract. But all things being equal, I will entertain a motion regarding the deputy police chief contract.
So moved.
Second.
To renew.
To renew.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. I will entertain a motion regarding the town administrator's contract renewal and entering into discussions with her.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All right, all in favor? And I will entertain a motion regarding the highway director contract renewal. In our meeting, in our executive session meeting, we voted that we would not renew that contract. I will entertain a motion and open session on that.
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I must admit, Ms. Green, we were a bit mystified about High Street Park Committee discussion. Was this because we had asked you to look into some mitigation efforts Was this because we had asked you to look into some mitigation efforts with, you know, in terms of traffic and safety and stuff like that? Was that for you to give an update, or was that for Mr. Weeks to give an update?
Mr. Weeks had requested he be added to the agenda today.
I want to push off.
Okay.
Okay, so can we put that on next week then?
Nope.
Oh.
So we haven't met, so we haven't met yet. I do have stuff that the board is going to need to hopefully take a vote on.
Oh, boy.
And all good things.
Okay.
But we haven't met yet. We haven't been able to coordinate schedules like I thought.
Okay.
I promised you, I watched it to remind myself what this was about. So we are meeting on the 18th, but that is the day after next week's meeting, so whatever the one is after the 18th.
And April 2nd.
Yeah, so that one, please.
Okay.
I thought this was to discuss...
Wait, are you meeting on the 18th?
We're meeting on the 18th, which is, isn't that...
Monday.
Oh, is it Monday?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Oh, so wait, no, we can go back, we can go to next week. We can go to the 19th.
Okay. I mean, if you still want extra time, it's totally fine to put it together.
No, we should be fine, it's just a little bit of coordination.
Okay.
And then we were going to talk about security and things like that.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about with the, you know, blocking cars and stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that is a high priority, there's a lot of wrecks and stuff along that. I would try to push that sooner rather than later, but...
We just haven't been able to coordinate schedules.
Okay.
There's too many overlapping meetings on Mondays and holidays, pesky holidays keep getting away of us being able to meet, so...
Ms. Green, have you been able to make any overtures to, any inquiries with Highway about jersey barriers, about maybe picking up some of the material that was there?
I have not had a chance to speak with Highway about this.
Okay, okay. So I'm wondering if you could kind of do that in the background, and maybe if you could update Mr. Weeks for his Monday meeting, is that even what you were going to be talking about?
No, no, we're talking about something else.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to do stuff with the plans and get presentations and things like that for you to know, but...
All right. But if both of you guys can do your thing, and then maybe we could talk about both things under the umbrella of High Street Park update.
I'm trying to finalize the agenda, at least.
Okay, thank you. That sounds fantastic. I will, next up, we have accept Jean Dean's resignation from Requon Reuse Committee. I will entertain a motion.
So moved with regret.
Seconded with regret.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Accept Therese Jordan's resignation from IT Department, Ms. Green.
Yes, so our assistant IT, our IT assistant tendered her resignation. She has moved out of town, and her new home and the lack of a vehicle does not make it for an easy commute, so she's tendered a resignation. Her last day will be March 21st.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to accept Therese Jordan's resignation from the IT Department.
So moved with regret.
Seconded with regret.
Okay, all in favor? All right.
Can I ask, is there any, is there any thought to finding a replacement for her?
Yeah, you're going to post for that?
Well, we will be posting on Indeed, because that seems to be where we get the most applicants from.
Okay.
So we will be posting that on Indeed, yes.
All right, that's great. And then we will, we have appoint Cameron Allegra to the Highway Department as the heavy equipment operator, Ms. Green.
Okay, so basically, we had an opening with the exit of an employee, we had an opening for heavy equipment operator. Resume, it was advertised, resumes were collected, interviews were conducted, references were checked, and Ms. Allegra, he has basically wonderful references. Anybody we spoke with had nothing but very good things to say about him. He left his last job to enter the military, and for reasons that cannot be spoken of, he had to leave the military, and he's been looking for a job. His background, his experience, he holds many certifications and licenses that are in line with a heavy equipment operator, so I do ask the board to please appoint him as our new heavy equipment operator.
Okay, sounds like a bringing endorsement. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Green, fireworks site letter of support discussion, deja vu all over again.
All over again. Okay, so you do in your packet have a copy of a letter of support to the governor. I was struggling a little bit with finding good wording for this, have reached out to some resources, but really didn't have a lot of information to go by. Hanover did generate a letter, so I did take some of their wording, and finally was able to put a letter together that is similar to Hanover's, but it is fashioned towards Hanson. So that's what we have in front of us right now, and if the board would sign this letter, we can get this to Governor Haley's office. And we will also send copies of this letter to Senator Warren, Senator Amaki, Senator Brady, Congressman Keating, Representative Cutler, State Representative DeCoste, the United States Environmental Protection Agency will get a copy, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Town of Pembroke, and Town of Hanover, so...
Representative Cutler is no longer our representative?
Well, his office, well, his former office...
The former office of Representative Cutler?
The former office, so...
Empty state representative's office?
Well, I guess we'll just send it to Mr. DeCoste, to Representative DeCoste.
Do we need to modify the letter before signing it? Because I'm not sure that that word appeared.
Hanson understands that listing that...
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
We'll take that out.
All right, so...
If it has to be edited anyway.
So, yeah, so we'll remove Representative Cutler, and we will make that little, remove the...
After that.
From the third paragraph, first sentence. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the letter, ask presented to us for Ms. Green to send to Governor Haley regarding the Superfund sites.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And so Ms. McDowell, are you going to tweak that, and tonight you didn't give it to us to sign?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. I like your stick-to-itness, that's great.
I like it.
All right. And then that brings us to planning board report for MBTA zoning by law, Ms. Green.
Okay, so Mr. DeFrayis is continuing to work with the consultant that we were able to bring on with the grant to finalize the zoning for the bylaw. It is being reviewed right now by the MBTA, the Zoning Regulations Committee, and hopefully we will receive, oh, hopefully we will receive their feedback and any revisions that they'd like to see well prior to town meeting so that we can get this in the warrant article, but we do have a placeholder in there for this. And again, there is a lot of misinformation out there on this. We cannot stress enough that this is only creating the zoning. We are not building the housing, we are not hiring people to build housing. We do not control the private property that is held privately around the commuter rail station. This is simply to create the zoning, and that, and nothing more. So people who think we're going to build 700 units, it's very unlikely that's going to happen. They're saying that at a most extreme measure, 700 units could go in, but that's going to entail the private property owners that are around the commuter rail station to give up their properties. So that happening is basically...
Well, not to give up their properties, that is, I mean, it's a private...
It would be a private developer...
A private developer, right. Would develop it. But I do want to remind people, we don't have cow sewer, and that is all right near wetlands.
Exactly.
And there are poor soil conditions. So what the MBTA community's regulation requires, and we're on the record, the entire board is saying, we think that this is, you know, that this is obnoxious.
Yes.
But, but that said, what the MBTA community regulation requires is that you draw a line around a zone, and you say, this is the MBTA community, this is where you can build, you know, and we will comply. To be clear, as part of the Economic Development Committee, I can tell you, it was always going to be in that area, whether we designated it as an MBTA community or not. That corridor, that Main Street, is the area that really needs revitalization, and the building of residents and businesses, it was always going to be there. So I will say, we've already gone over this, you know, in terms of our feeling that this is an overreach by the state. And that said, just in the last week or so, there's now 13 more grants that we would not be considered for, or they put it a different way, I think they were more diplomatic, and they said that our lack of compliance would be taken into consideration. For grants that we've gotten, like the land grant where we got $300,000 for the sleeper property?
Yes.
Yeah, we wouldn't get that if we don't comply with this.
Correct, correct.
And the library grant that they're thinking of getting, we wouldn't be eligible. Those are just off the top of my head, but they're real grants. The first blush, when the MBTA communities, kind of, when the governor was threatening what grants we wouldn't get, I honestly, my initial reaction was, eh, those aren't really grants we necessarily have ever applied for, I'm not super concerned about that. I still think, you know, I still felt like we don't have the legal resources to battle this, and we definitely, you know, should try to comply. But then when they came out with the other 13 grants, it would eviscerate us. The amount of grant money that this town would lose is staggering. And it's the grant money that has allowed us to move forward on such a meager budget as we've just discussed, and actually make progress on things like looking at sidewalks, on doing studies on, you know, Main Street, on what we need to do to improve it. I mean, the list just goes on and on and on, on buying the sleeper property, which was a pivotal piece of property to connect, you know, the Camp Kewahney with the Smitty's Bog, and the list could go on and on.
Correct.
So, you know, I think one thing that I did mention, and I think the board had asked Ms. Green, is at some point, if we could get a comprehensive list of grants, both forward-looking and, you know, historical, that we, that would impact us, and if, you know, we don't pass this, MBTA communities, I really think this is an important piece of information for us. I don't know one person, well, I'm sure they're out there, but I don't personally know anybody who's jumping for joy at the thought of complying with this. I haven't heard anyb... I'm not saying that we're not recognizing that there's a need for affordable housing. It certainly in Hanson there is. We know, we're only at like 4%.
Right.
You know, so we've got a huge amount of territory to make up. It's just the way that this was gone about is just, I think it's just sticking in people's craw, but we need to know the facts. So the facts are, I think we owe people the facts so that people can make informed decisions based on the facts. And similarly, I would really like to make sure that, since this is going to be on the warrant, that we have, I assume it would be Mr. DeFrayis, but somebody in the planning board, able to speak to the process for developing that zone, and, you know, what the criteria was and what the process was. Because I think, again, the facts need to be discussed. There seem to be a lot of, there seems to be a lot of misinformation being bandied about that is not going to be helpful to people.
Correct.
So, all right, I will now step down off of my soapbox. So thank you for that report. And then that brings us to the May annual special town meeting warrant review. Ms. Green, what say you?
Okay, so in your packets, you have a draft of our special town meeting and annual town meeting warrant. There have been many additional articles, well, not many additional, but articles that had placeholders in them. We've been receiving those, and we've been incorporating those into the warrant. So basically, you have a more complete warrant. There is still work to be done, because we are still waiting on some articles, as we are waiting the MBT article. There was another article that I received by law language today for that I have to revise, modify, and then get that in where our placeholder is. But at least we are pinpointing and zoning in on the money part of the articles, and that's what we have before us today. Lynn has been doing a great job. Last year, Lynn and I were both working on the warrants, and it really confused our town council with two of us working on it. So Lynn is mainly working on the warrant, I'm reviewing it, but I'm not touching it because we want to make sure, you know, we had too much salt last year. So I'm just letting her be the cook, and I'm just tasting the soup.
And what stage are we in with the departments and committees reviewing their own articles? Because we had a few lapses on that last year.
So we did send a copy out to all of the departments and committees that have articles in here for them to review. I think only one came forward with just a couple of corrections.
A couple of corrections, all right.
So, you know, they've had a once-around on this, and as we continue to work on it and really tweak it and finalize it, we're going to keep sending it out to everybody so that they can continue to review it.
All right, and since, I mean, I really hate to keep saying this word, but we've already, you know, mentioned it a couple times tonight. If we were to put an override in the warrant, I did call our town clerk to get, gauge her timeline, what her timeline was, I believe she said 35 days before.
So, yes, so by April 13th, we need to present to her if we're going to put this on the ballot, which this is in the purview of the select board, to vote to place on the ballot the override question. We need to present to her the exact language of the ballot question by April 13th.
Okay, and similarly, I checked with the lovely and talented Ms. McDowell, and she indicated your timeline's right around there, too. So that was soundipidus, so. So we really need to make a decision in a pretty short period of time. And not just for the deadline, but also for educating people and getting material out there. This isn't an insignificant decision for people to make. So we really, you know...
I am working with Eric, our town accountant, to work out both scenarios, without the override and, you know, the very, very deep cuts that we will face, and with the override. You know, what, we're putting together numbers for both columns.
Well, and I'm wondering if you could come to us next week with the proposal on how this would be communicated, and what formats, you know, are you going to do like cable interview, you're going to do letter to the editor, I'm just making this stuff up, are you going to put something on our website? I don't know. Social media, all of the above?
All of the above.
You know, so just, you know, and again, you know, I know you know this, but we have to be neutral, you can't be, you know...
Oh, correct.
Yeah, so...
We cannot advocate...
We're just presenting the facts.
Yes. I really encourage anyone out there to come in and talk with me. We can talk with our town accountant to get the facts, because there are people out there who will take to all the social media pages, again, to get misguided misinformation out there. We are, our office is always open for folks to come in and talk with us.
I'd like you to think about whether a public forum, and I do realize this could be a bit of a bloodbath, but whether a public forum with the town accountant, FinCom, you know, like a panel kind of thing where people can just ask questions, whether that might be something that we would want to try, I don't know. Just think about how we, you know, because my thought process is if you had something like that, maybe some of the questions, and I'm not trying to impede anybody's right to get up a town meeting, but we don't want to necessarily have town meeting be the place where people are getting educated.
Correct.
So if we had some other ways of educating people so that people get the facts they need before they're attending town meeting.
Well, perhaps we could reach out to the middle school, and maybe, maybe the first week of April, last week of March, first week of April, put out, maybe reserve the auditorium for a forum specifically for questions and answers on the potential override. We could do something like that.
That's great, yeah.
Okay, where are you at on that?
We'll work on something like that.
Okay. All right, well, any comments, questions?
Not that it matters, but this might be a good time. I'm out the April 9th through the 17th, so if it goes later than that...
Oh, well, you just can't have it that week, Mr. Gill, or you have to change your vacation plans.
I'm going to miss a confirmation, but...
Yeah.
I'm thinking of right around like the very first week of April.
Well, just keep in mind, we may not have made a decision by then. We may not have made a decision by then.
We can still talk about it, though, right?
We could still talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and that will give us basically...
And school vacation.
Well, it's not until the 22nd, but that will give us...
So we have a meeting April, so our next meeting is the 19th, right? That's next week.
March 19th and then April 2nd.
And then April 2nd is our next meeting, so we've got a little bit of a gun to our head.
So perhaps the April 2nd meeting, we could encompass that into the forum up at the middle school.
Oh, wait a minute, you're including all of us? We wanted you...
Of course.
We just wanted you to be on the fire.
That way, you know, it's either, it's either make or break, because then we would have basically one week to put together the ballot question and get it to the town clerk by Saturday, April 13th.
Yeah, so just let us know next week, whatever your plan is, what you think the best path is, and we'll take it from there.
All right.
All right, well, we appreciate that. Then that brings us to approving open session minutes for February 13th and February 27th. I will entertain a motion to approve the February 13th, 2024, open session minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? I will entertain a motion to approve the February 27th, 2024, minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, and then that brings us to the one-day licenses, liquor licenses. We've got 4-624 Megan Silva, 4-2724 Danielle Coletti, 6-2324 Maria Courtney, 8-324 Jim Kleberg, and 8-925 Krista Brown, wedding. Wedding.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Fantastic. That brings us to committee updates. We are chugging along here and we are doing well for time, but I'm not necessarily encouraging people to embellish on their reports. I'm passing that now. Economic Development Committee, I don't have anything to report. We will be meeting actually next week, and at that point, I expect to have something. High Street PAC Committee, I think we know where you're at?
Yep.
We're good. Highway Committee, you know I'm anxious to hear about this. What's going on, ladies? Anything?
We have a meeting scheduled for April 13th, not April 13th.
Don't do it on April 13th.
That's a Saturday. When was the meeting? Do you know what the meeting is? It's April...
Why can't you drink out of it?
Sorry, the, let's see.
I think it's a 20, it's a 20...
You had Mike left, he could've told us.
Wait a minute, no. All right, well, you guys can have your people call.
It's Thursday, April 25th.
It's the 25th, yeah. Okay. Yeah. All right, well, that's good. I'm glad something's on the books. McQuine Property Reuse Committee, Ms. McDowell, I think we need to reschedule in light of Ms. Dean's departure and the other member not necessarily coming to that meeting, so I just want to make sure we've got a quorum. So if we can reach out to Mr. Babo and if we can reschedule, that would be lovely. Recreation Committee, there is nothing on that. Transfer Station Task Force, what, Joe?
I think it's time to wrap it up.
Can we take a vote here that we just don't want to pursue it anymore as a board, as the Select Board?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion for the Select Board to no longer participate in the Transfer Station Task Force.
So moved.
And I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't know what people will talk about now, but I'm sure they'll find other things. Whitman-Hanson Regional School Agreement Committee, I'm not, we haven't really heard on a new date on that, Ms. Green.
We haven't heard a new date yet. Apparently, they're still waiting on Mars.
Oh, okay.
For their report or availability, so we're just waiting on a new date for that.
All right, well, and then that brings us to the Town Administrator Report, Ms. Green.
Okay, as Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. So last Tuesday, March 5th, was Super Tuesday. So I do want to recognize our town clerk, Beth Sloan, Assistant Town Clerk, Jean Kelly, and all the election workers for their hard work that day. Basically, they were, they were at the school, middle, it's a middle school from 5:00 in the morning, and then they were here till 11:30 that evening, certifying the votes and getting, doing everything that they need to do for that, so recognizing their very hard work. Also recognizing Charlie Baker and the highway employees who helped them with moving their equipment to and from the school, back to the town hall. So kudos to all for a great job that day. It's gonna be a very busy year for our town clerk this year. I would like to speak for just a moment on the Community Garden located up at the Plymouth County Hospital Site. Now, the Select Board's office really doesn't have any oversight or any really, anything to do with the Community Garden, other than collecting the waivers. And what this does, it just makes sure it covers the town for any liability, so that's where we do want to be involved. But there's 100 plots out there available. Anyone, anyone who would like some information can contact John Siemens, he is the co-chair. The information email is hansongarden@gmail.com. They will be holding an information meeting on Thursday, April 18th, at the Senior Center, so anybody that would like information, certainly join the meeting. One thing just to note is that some of the vegetables that are grown at the Community Garden are donated to the Hanson Food Factory, so it's a very good resource for that. Evelyn Golden, who has been overseeing the Community Garden for the past 10 years, will be stepping down, so John Siemens and Phil Clemmons are the co-chairs until they really, I guess, elect some permanent people. A little bit ago, I had come to the board and talked about Perch Solar, so back in 2018, our former, bless you, Town Administrator Mike the Hugh entered into three agreements with solar company for net metering credits, and over the years, basically, the question came up, is it still a good, is it still a good savings for the town? Are we getting what we're supposed to getting? So we did bring on a consulting service to do an audit of the credits and all the national grid counts that are included. Now, the Water Department has actually the lead on this because they use up the most electricity. So they did look at all the national grid accounts that were pinpointed for credit, and they did show that all these national grid accounts are receiving the right amount of credits. Over the years, it has been a significant savings in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to the town. There are some accounts that allocation should be moved around because some accounts have way more credits than other accounts, and they should be even across the board. So our consultant is gonna work with me and National Grid on getting those credits reallocated. But it is, it is still a good move for the town, and everything is being allocated the correct way. To circle back on the grants, the Mass One Start for Growth Grant Program is basically kind of the nucleus of the cell. They collect all the applications and then disseminate them all to the different grant programs. So our town planner submitted five expressions of interest and received positive feedback on four, and unfortunately, on one, which is a generator for the Senior Center Library, is not eligible. But he is going to submit two additional expressions of interest to hopefully get some grants for the Open Space Plan and the Housing Production Plan. So he will be submitting those and hopefully will get some positive feedback, and with that receipt, he will work on those applications, get those submitted.
I think he said for the generator one, he was gonna look for resiliency grant opportunities?
But we're still gonna, yeah, we're still gonna pursue it, just like the culvert. We're gonna keep going and going and going on it.
Why, why was it rejected?
Their wording was, the project was not in line with the underutilized properties program, so...
He put it in a category, and they just feel like it's a square peg in a round hole.
Yeah.
But, but he thinks if he tries to go, which it would be, for resiliency, that like if there's a weather-related issue, that we need to keep that open as a, you know, that he's pretty sure he'll get it, he'll get it, so he's gonna...
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, we had put in for the generator through ARPA funds, and I even copied the language from the actual statute on the Treasury, and it was still rejected, so we're looking at different avenues for that. Again, but, you know, this is an area, that One Start for Growth, that is really where most of those grants are that are affiliated with the MBTA. And, you know, speaking of the ARPA grants, I did complete the ARPA closeout memo that was required and due to Plymouth County by February 29th, that outlined the two projects that we, that the board voted on on February 6th, which is the new ambulance in the Pratt Place culvert. So I did submit that memo, so we are in compliance. Today, I did submit the application for the Pratt Place culvert, and the board signed the agreement that I will submit as well. Tomorrow, I am gonna try and get the ambulance application submitted, so it will get in your system, and then that will start the process to secure the ARPA funds for those two projects. We do have the Articles in Town Meeting for both of those projects, which is required, and the board to vote, so we are on the right track for these ARPA funds. And that actually concludes my Town Administrator Report for this week.
All right, well, that is amazing. That's a lot of good stuff. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to go to executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, highway director, union negotiations with highway administration, police, fire. Executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, and if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares. Building litigation discussion, fireworks litigation discussion. Executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes, February 27th, 2024. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, adjourn open session.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will entertain a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I should mention, we are not coming back out into open session.
Waiting for you to say.
Thank you, sorry. I knew you guys were like...
It's like if there was a...
You can throw me a bone here once in a while. Okay, did somebody second that?
I did.
Okay, roll call?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Nice to see you, Mr.